I'd like to call the Monday, October 26, 2020, Blue Springs Planning Commission Meeting to Order. If everyone could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome everyone this evening. And for those watching at home, tonight's agenda consists of Item 1, Consent Agenda, which consists of the October 12th Meeting Minutes. Item 2, General Development Plan for Casey's General Store. Item 3, Conditional Use Permit for Casey's General Store. Item 4, General Development Plan for Chase Bank. Item 5, Preliminary Platte for Casey's General Store. Item 6, Site Plan for Chase Bank. Item 7, Preliminary Platte for Chase Bank. Item 8, Final Platte for Sunset Corner. Item 9, Site Plan for Blue Springs Logistics. Item 10, Final Platte, Blue Springs Logistics. Item 11, Master Alternative Sign Plan for Valley Oak Meats. Item 12, Other Business. And Item 13, Adjournment. At this time, I entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Chair?
Mr. Peel?
I move that the meeting minutes from October 12th of the Planning Commission be approved as submitted.
Have a motion for Commissioner Peel. Do I have a second? Have a second from Commissioner Karadoff? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those, any opposed? Alright. Thank you. So we have several or a few public hearings, so I'm gonna go quickly through the procedure for the public hearings. I'll call the, open the public hearing, call for exhibits from the city attorney, have the staff make their presentation, the applicant can come forward and make their presentation, then we'll ask for witnesses in favor, then witnesses opposed, and then some general discussion, and then we'll close the public hearing and call and look for motions. So next, we're gonna hear Items 2, 3, and 5 together, and we'll vote on them separately. I want to open the public hearing for General Development Plan GDP 10207511 and Conditional Use Permit CUP 10207519 for Casey's General Store, and ask for exhibits from our city attorney, Jackie Summer.
Mr. Chairman, I offer the following exhibits into the record. Exhibit 1, Staff Report with Attachments. Exhibit 2, Application with Attachments. Exhibit 3, Affidavit of Publication in the Examiner on October 10, 2020. Exhibit 4, 185-foot Notification Map. 5, Names and Addresses of Property Owners Within 185 Feet of the Site. 6, Copy of the Letter Sent to Said Property Owners. 7, Title 4 Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by Reference. And 8, 2014 Comprehensive Plan by Reference. Those are the exhibits for GDP 10207511. For CUP 10207519, I offer the following exhibits. 1, Staff Report with Attachments. 2, Application with Attachments. 3, Affidavit of Publication in the Examiner on October 10, 2020. 4, 185-foot Notification Map. 5, Names and Addresses of Property Owners Within 185 Feet of the Site. 6, Copy of the Letter Sent to Said Property Owners. 7, Title 4 Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by Reference. And 8, 2014 Comprehensive Plan by Reference.
Thank you. At this time, I'd ask for the staff's presentation.
Thank you, Chair members of the Planning Commission. As we are hearing the Casey's General Store.
Mr. Malin, I think your mic is off.
It turns on.
There we go. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Chair and Planning Commissioners. Tonight is the General Development Plan, Conditional Use Permit, and Preliminary Platte applications for the Casey's General Store to be located at the southeast corner of Woodschapel Road and northwest Duncan. The property is bounded by the black and white dotted line here. The proposal is to remove the existing building on-site and to construct a new Casey's General Store, which consists of a 14-pump gas station, which would be underneath a 4,300-square-foot canopy, as well as an approximately 3,900-square-foot convenience store. The overall site is 2.5 acres approximately. Property is zoned, as you can see here in this map, red, for general business. The service station at land use requires a Conditional Use Permit, whereas the mid-sized retail, which is what the convenience store would fall under, is a use that is permitted by right. Let me pull up the site plan here. This is the proposed site plan here. Duncan Road is up here along the northern boundary. This is Woodschapel Road here, along the left or western edge of the site, Jefferson Street to the south. The proposed site will have three access drives, one on each road, one on Duncan, Woodschapel, and one on Jefferson. On-site detention will be provided. The building type is a general commercial building, which meets, and the general, the proposed site plan meets all of the required setbacks, building height, lot coverage requirements as outlined in the Unified Development Code. It also meets all of the parking lot or parking space requirements for the size of the use for the convenience store and gas station. A total of 23 parking spaces are required, or a minimum of 20 percent, or 20 parking spaces are required, with 30 maximum allowed, and they're providing 23 parking spaces. There are three bicycle parking spaces being provided. There will be private internal sidewalks adjacent to the building. The building was located here, along the eastern edge of the site, with the gas station canopies out here, kind of in the gray area to show, and that is where the canopy will be located. There is one modification being requested as part of the General Development Plan, which would be to allow an eight-foot sidewalk in front of the store entrance along the western edge. Currently, the Unified Development Code requires a 12-foot sidewalk adjacent to any building entrance for a commercial building. We've had a number of modification requests to allow eight feet recently by projects that have come before the Planning Commission, and that is actually something that the staff is looking at amending in some Unified Development Code amendments that we'll be bringing forward to you later this year. And so, staff is in support of that request and feels that 12 feet is a little bit excessive for that, or for this use, and that eight feet is an acceptable amount of sidewalk to have in front of the building entrance. Landscaping for the site, even though a final landscape plan will be provided with the Site Plan Design Review at a later stage of the development, as you can see from this drawing, landscaping is provided conceptually in terms of the landscape areas along the east side of the property, along Jefferson Street, Woodschapel, and the open property up here. The proposed landscape plan, conceptually, does meet all of the Unified Development Code landscape requirements in terms of area buffers, landscape frontages, and plant materials. And again, the final plant types and plant unit counts and all of those final details will be addressed later at the time of the Site Plan Design Review, but generally speaking, it complies with all of the code requirements as shown today. The architecture for the building utilizes a more residential design standard, or residential standard, with a pitched roof and gables above the entrances. Primary building materials are brick and lapped siding with fiberglass asphalt shingles on the roof. And these are the rear elevation, which would face east, and that's the south elevation that would face south onto Jefferson Street. These are the proposed colored renderings for the property, again, showing the types of materials, the wall lighting in terms of the architectural detailed lighting, and the storefront entrance, the back of the building, and then again, the front elevation, and that would be the south side elevation, the rear elevation, and this would be the north elevation that faces up to Duncan Road. Site lighting was provided, conceptually in nature. This would also be fine-tuned with the Site Plan Design Review application, but it does appear to comply with all of the code requirements. There is a sign packet that's included here, however, this is not part of the Planning Commission's review at this time. They have not requested any deviations from the sign code. If they do, it would have to come back before the Planning Commission in terms of a Master Alternative Sign Plan, or just a Master Sign Plan. However, they did provide kind of some signage drawings, just to give you a sense of what it may look like. All signed permits are approved administratively through a separate building permit by staff, unless they need to come back before you. This is the proposed gas station canopy with colors and materials to match the proposed And with that, staff reviewed the three applications against the criteria outlined in the code for each. Staff finds that the General Development Plan and Preliminary Platte meet the relevant code criteria outlined for their review by the Planning Commission, and by the, or by the Planning Commission, and finds that this development meets or exceeds those criteria, and that the development is compliance with the Comprehensive Plan designation of corridor reinvestment and neighborhood retail. It conforms to the general business zoning, should the CUP be approved, and it complies with all of the provisions of the Unified Development Code, and is compatible with adjacent land uses and should not have any negative detrimental impacts on adjacent property or use of adjacent property. So staff therefore recommends approval of the General Development Plan and the Preliminary Platte. In terms of the Conditional Use Permit, service stations do have additional code criteria that they need to provide as part of the Conditional Use Permit, and I'll address this at this time. Service stations need to provide a traffic study in order to address traffic volumes, traffic patterns, and things of that nature. The applicant has submitted a traffic study, which has been reviewed by our Public Works Department and has been found to be acceptable for this property and given the existing roadway infrastructure in the area. The service station and convenience store, should they want to be open 24 hours, need to identify that at this time, and they are indeed asking to be open 24 hours. And since this property is not adjacent to any residentially-zoned property, there are no issues with compatibility between a commercial land use, more intense commercial land use such as a service station and residential property, and therefore, there's no additional screening or buffering required of this use to adjacent properties. The convenience store is proposing to sell alcoholic beverages, which they need to identify at this time, and they are not planning to have any auto repair or car wash as part of this service station use. The architectural design of the gas station and canopy are compatible with each other, utilize similar materials and colors to help them blend together. Staff also finds that the proposed Conditional Use Permit application and proposed use is compatible with the area in terms of building scale, form, and site design, as well as operational aspects such as hours of operation, traffic impacts, and intensity of land uses with adjacent land uses, and that the application will not prevent the development of any surrounding properties to be in accordance with the Comprehensive Plan or Development Regulations. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the Conditional Use Permit as well, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Malin. Any questions for staff? Okay. Seeing none, I would ask the applicant to come forward if they'd like to make a presentation. So you'll need to be sworn in and state your name and address for the record.
My name's Kevin McLaughlin.
Sorry, you have to swear in just that gentleman right there. Yeah.
Yes.
My office address is 2407 Southeast Cottonwood Street, Bentonville, Arkansas. We're with Morrison-Chipley Engineers. We're the engineer preparing the plans for Casey's. I think Mr. Malin did a good job presenting. I'm not gonna reiterate everything he said. Just a couple of other items to add to it. You know, he did mention we're gonna have site lighting. Casey's is also gonna have a dumpster pad, but it'll be enclosed with a six-foot-tall brick enclosure with wood, with metal gates. The rooftop equipment will be screened with a metal parapet, so that will also meet city Other than that, like I said, I think, you know, just reiterate, they are planning to be open 24 hours, seven days a week, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
So at this time, I would ask if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of the project? Okay. Yep. So the same deal, you'll have to be sworn in and state your name and address for the record.
Yes, I do. Good evening, everyone. My name's Mike Bryant, and I'm the Real Estate Associate for Casey's General Stores. I just wanted to thank everyone for their time, and we're looking forward to building our second project here in Blue Springs and starting to evaluate a couple other locations in your guys' community, so let us know if you have any questions.
Any questions for this witness?
Can you go ahead and state your address?
Oh, yes. My home address is 2012 Northwest Harvest Drive, Grimes, Iowa.
Thank you.
And of course, I'm in favor for the project, so.
Thank you. Any, sorry. Is there any, anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak in favor? Okay. I would ask if there's anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in opposition of the project? Okay.
Well, not really opposition, just.
Same, so same deal, you have to get yourself sworn in and state your name and address.
Yes. John Towne, T-O-W-N. My office address is 3424 Northwest Duncan Road in Blue Springs.
Could you, could you say that in the microphone?
Yeah. 3424 Northwest Duncan Road, Blue Springs.
And what was your name one more time?
John Towne.
John Towne. Okay. Thank you.
I own the building right next to it, the 3424. I didn't get anything in the mail about it, but I just, I'm not really for or against, I just have some concerns, one being the watershed coming off the back of, coming from the field that's next to my building that comes across the back and goes into the current property, so I just, I'm concerned that if it's not done right, it's gonna create a big pond, and there's quite a bit of water and heavy rain that comes through there, so I just wanna make sure there's something done right. My property line is basically, their property, the edge of my building is basically the property line, so just, I have concerns just when they start doing landscaping, it doesn't create anything that creates, that interferes with my building or my roof or anything like that. And that's about it that I know of so far, because I, like I said, I know very little about this. I just came today because I hadn't got anything in the mail about it yet or anything, or any, any plans or any drawings or anything, so.
Okay. Any questions for this witness? Okay. Alright. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak in opposition of this project? Okay. I guess I would allow, you know, if there's any, any response to any of those concerns, I guess, from either the applicant or staff?
From the staff's perspective, I could address the landscaping, as this is, just the conceptual landscape plan stage, we can work with the development group as they finalize their landscape plans at the Site Plan Design Review level, to make sure that any trees or plantings that they put in that portion of the site adjacent to the building over here do not have, you know, a canopy that will encroach upon that building later in the future. So that's something that we can certainly take forward and, and work with the applicant on, making sure that it doesn't.
If you guys have seen my building, it's looking much, much better than it was when we first bought it. I was trying to do a lot to improve it.
Certainly understand, and that's something we'll, we'll note and make sure to keep working with the applicant on as we further progress on their details. In terms of storm drainage, all sites are required to detain storm flows from their property and then release them at the historical rate. I'm not sure if this will create any more drainage problems for the adjacent property, but as, again, the Site Plan Design Review formalizes the grading of the site, and we look at the true contours and things of that nature, that's something that we'll make sure to carry forward as well through.
I wanted to add back to the property line.
So, just, sorry, we can't, we can't really have any conversation because it can't hear it, but if you'd like to come over, come forward again and.
I'm eventually planning on taking my building and adding it back to the property line, so if I have a water problem, then I'm just worried about, you know, flooding when I do, you know, eventually finish that out, the concrete, and right now, there's, you know, I can have two, three inches of water and a heavy rain come back through there, and so, it's something we need to just keep in mind.
Okay.
Let it, I'm not, you know, sounds good?
Okay.
Yeah. I can, that's something we'll make sure to look at during that Site Plan Design Review and the fine-tuning of the Site Plan and the grading and all that, to make sure that there's no additional runoff from this property onto his property.
Okay. Just, and just to clarify, there's no other opposition, or questions about opposition in the audience? I think I've covered that one, but just wanted to make sure. And then, any other questions or discussion with the commissioners? Okay. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing, and I would ask for a motion on the General Development Plan.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Billups.
I would move for approval of the General Development Plan 10207511 with the one-staff condition.
I have a motion from Commissioner Billups. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Stokenberry, and this will be a real call vote.
Plenny, Commissioner Karadoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Billups?
Aye.
Peel?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Stokenberry?
Aye.
Rohr?
Aye.
Sanderson?
Aye. So that motion carried with the one-staff condition. This item will be recommended and heard by the City Council at their Monday, November 2nd meeting at 6:00 PM. I would now ask for a motion on the Conditional Use Permit.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Billups.
I would also move for approval of the Conditional Use Permit 10207519 with the two-staff conditions.
Okay. Have a motion from Commissioner Billups. Do I have a second?
And I'll second that.
Commissioner Stokenberry, a second? This will be, also be a real call vote.
Plenny, Commissioner Peel?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Stokenberry?
Aye.
Rohr?
Aye.
Karadoff?
Aye.
Billups?
Aye.
Sanderson?
Aye. So that motion also carried with the two-staff conditions. This item will be recommended and heard by the City Council at their Monday, November 2nd meeting at 6:00 PM. And finally, I'd ask for a motion on the Preliminary Platte.
Mr. Chairman, I'm on a roll.
Yep. Commissioner Billups.
I'll move for approval of the Preliminary Platte 10207521 with the four-staff conditions.
Thank you. I have a motion from Commissioner Billups. Do I have a second?
And I'll second that.
Okay. I have a second from Commissioner Stokenberry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And that motion also carried with the four-staff conditions. Alright, so next, we'll be hearing Items 4, 6, 7, and 8 together and voting on them separately. I'm gonna open the public hearing for General Development Plan GDP 10207518 for Chase Bank, and ask for exhibits, excuse me, exhibits from our city attorney.
I offer the following exhibits into the record for GDP 10207518. Exhibit 1, Staff Report with Attachments. 2, Application with Attachments. 3, Affidavit of Publication in the Examiner on October 10, 2020. 4, 185-foot Notification Map. 5, Names and Addresses of Property Owners Within 185 Feet of the Site. 6, Copy of the Letter Sent to Said Property Owners. 7, Title 4 Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by Reference. And 8, 2014 Comprehensive Plan by Reference.
Thank you. And at this time, I'd ask for the staff's presentation.
Thank you, Chair Sanderson and Planning Commission. For you today is a request for GDP, a General Development Plan, Preliminary Platte, a Final Platte, and a Site Plan Design Review for the Sunset Corner subdivision, as well as the Chase Bank development for the Site Plan Design Review. The property is approximately one acre, a little less than that. It is located at the northwest corner of Sunset Avenue and Seven Highway, pretty close to the intersection of 740 here in Blue Springs. It's addressed at 815 Southwest 7 Highway and is currently, or was the location of the Raytown Lee Summit Credit, Community Credit Union. Chase Bank is proposing to demolish the building that's currently located there and redevelop it as same use, same use, a bank to bank, and, and develop their site as they see fit. It's currently zoned GB, which the proposed land use bank, existing and proposed, were allowed, are allowed, and in the GB or general business zoning district. The platte, for first, to start, the platte is a one-lot subdivision. The northern half of the property has been platted, whereas the southern half has not, and thus, we're going through the full preliminary, final platte process. The necessary road improvements have already been made, and no further road improvements are required. However, there are sidewalks that are required with this plating of the property. Additionally, there is a little bit of a right-of-way that will need to be shown on the platte that was not able to make it into the agenda. The applicant has provided a revised platte that shows a chamfered corner where the, the site triangle right-of-way will be needed to protect any site triangle issues, and also to accommodate the sidewalk. The preliminary, final platte meets the minimum lot size, lot width requirements for a pad-site building. It is generally, meets all the requirements for the plating process. The General Development Plan is part of the preliminary platte process, also does meet everything for that as well. There are some dedications, including the required easement for the sanitary sewer line that exists on-site already, so the easement is shown here, five feet on either side of the existing line, to help protect the city's interests for providing public sewer to those around this property. Staff does recommend approval of the preliminary platte, the final platte, as well as the, as the General Development Plan for the Sunset Corner subdivision, a one-lot subdivision that would be platted in, in the one singular phase. Chase Bank, after plating, Chase Bank would look to get building permits if the Site Plan Design Review is approved by Planning Commission. The bank itself, the existing bank will be demolished. The proposed bank, Chase Bank, will remove one of the two existing driveways off of Sunset, leave the two, the farthest northern driveway on Seven and the farther, farthest west driveway on Sunset. The remainder of the site will be reconfigured as Chase Bank sees fit. The proposed building, approximately 3,000 square feet, give or take, and the location setbacks, building massing, building height, all meet code as required. The applicant, the proposal does, if I can zoom in. The site plan does provide the required parking, as well as the stacking for the proposed ATM drive-through in the northwest corner of the property. The bicycle parking is provided as well. As you can see, there's a sidewalk connecting from the, the public sidewalk unto the main entrance of the building, as required by code, to the widths as required. Additionally, the landscaping of this property, as proposed on the Site Plan Design Review, does meet the letter of the law on the required landscaping. They are providing the buffer edge frontage along Seven and Sunset that meets the continuous buffer or berm and street tree requirements along there, as well as the parking and, and open space landscaping throughout the site. Here is an image of the ATM, as well as the trash enclosure rendering that they are providing, building. Uh, building foot, foot, footprint and floor plan, um, as well as the elevations of the building that they're proposing to build. Uh, the building does meet the required, uh, transparency for a pad site building along Seven Highway. Um, it does provide, uh, good amount of, uh, masonry material on the building. Um, it, there's, uh, uh, some fiber cement siding, um, as well as some stone and some aluminum metal, um, composite material, um, that provides, uh, the exterior materials for the building itself, as well as the glazing windows, um, as proposed, as you can see here. The... In general, the, uh, lighting proposed, um, does meet the, the, uh, code requirements. Um, this will need to be, uh, provided, uh, as part of the building permit to verify everything. Um, all of the required screening is also, is also proposed as required by code, trash enclosure, uh, landscaping screening for anything else, um, that's a smaller, um, utility and, and a larger, like the trash enclosure, uh, fencing required for 100% screening. There are, there, or there is an existing pole sign on this property which will need to be, um, taken down, um, as part of the demolition of the building. Um, when a building's demolished, uh, the pole sign must come down with it. And so they are, uh, prepared to, and the site plan shows that they are prepared to remove that sign and replace it with a monument sign that does meet code. Um, so with that, I'll stand for any questions, but, uh, staff does recommend approval of the GDP. Um, the preliminary plat with five conditions, uh, the final plat with four conditions, and the site plan design review with three. Um, so I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Jury, uh, any questions for staff from the commission? Okay, alright, thank you. Uh, I'd like to ask at this time if the applicant would like to come forward and, uh, make a presentation. So you also need to be sworn in and state your name and address, please.
Is someone swear, that's why you're about to give this case in the group of the government?
Yes.
My name is Jason Stucker, I represent Haverweissaki Architecture. Our office is at 11-460 Tamahawk Creek Parkway Suite 400 in Lee Wood, Kansas. And I'm not gonna sit here and, I think Nathan did a fine job presenting our project, we're really just here to see if there was any fielded questions from council.
Thank you, uh, any questions for the applicant? Yes, Mr. Billups, Commissioner Billups?
I, I'm just curious, um, I know it's not part of the code or anything like that, but I, I noticed that you don't have any kind of a drive-through, um, drive-up banking anymore, is that a new trend, or is that?
No, this location does not have your traditional drive-up teller window. That is slowly becoming less of an importance to them. They do have the drive-up ATM which handles, they're finding more and more people just use the ATM for their deposits and withdrawals, but they will also have the 24-hour vestibule in the building itself, which also has a, uh, another ATM machine inside as well as a drop box.
Still, any other questions, Commissioner Billups, okay? Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So at this time I'd like to ask, and if there's anybody in the audience who'd like to speak or, speak in favor of this project? Okay, uh, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in opposition of this project? Okay, any, uh, final discussion with the commissioners?
Chair.
Commissioner Peel.
I only have one concern on this project, and that's the, um, east ingress and egress. Um, I think it's awful close to Seven Highway and Forty Highway. I think that may increase the preponderance of vehicle accidents at that location, uh, but otherwise I'm good with, uh, development. Thank you, Chair.
Any other comments from the commissioners? Alright, I'll close the public hearing. And I would ask for a motion for the general development plan.
Chair.
Commissioner Peel.
I move the general development plan GDP 10-20-7518 for Chase Bank be approved as submitted by staff.
Okay, thank you, motion from Commissioner Peel, do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, Commissioner Graham, thank you, uh, this will be a roll call vote.
Planning Commissioner Billups.
Aye.
Commissioner Peel.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Stokenberry.
Aye.
Roar.
Aye.
Cradoff.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye. Uh, so that motion carried, uh, this item will be recommended and heard by the city council on their Monday, November 2nd meeting at 6:00 PM. I would ask now for a motion on the site plan.
Chair.
Commissioner Peel.
I move the site plan design review SPDR 10-20-7514 for Chase Bank with three conditions be approved as submitted by staff.
Thank you, I have a motion from Commissioner Peel, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Roar, uh, this, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, uh, any opposed? Okay, so that motion carried with the three, the three staff conditions, and I would now ask for a motion on the preliminary plat.
Chair.
Commissioner Peel.
Thank you, sir, uh, for preliminary plat PF 10-20-7515 for Chase Bank with four conditions be approved as submitted by staff. Is there five?
Five.
Okay, five conditions, sorry, thank you.
Alright, thank you, I have a motion from Commissioner Peel, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Peel, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, aye, oh, Roar, I'm sorry, Roar, sorry, any opposed? So that motion carried, uh, with the five staff conditions, and, uh, lastly, I'd ask for a motion on the final plat.
Chair.
Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Graham.
Yes, I would move for approval of the final plat PF dash 10 dash 20 dash 7516 with the four staff conditions.
Thank you, I have a motion from Commissioner Graham, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Peel, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So that motion carried with the four staff conditions, and this item will be recommended and heard by the city council on their Monday, November 2nd meeting at 6:00 PM. Okay, so the next item on, uh, items on the agenda is the site plan for SPDR 0920-7489 and the final plat PF 0920-7490 for Blue Springs Logistics, and I would ask at this time for the staff's presentation.
Thank you, Chair, uh, this is, uh, staff's presentation for the site plan and design review and the final plat for the Blue Springs, uh, Logistics Center. Uh, property, um, has been before you, um, for the preliminary plat and the general development plan and the rezoning, uh, presentations, uh, for your recommendations to city council. For, uh, planning commission approved the preliminary plat on October 12th, and the city council approved the general development plan and the rezoning on October 19th. Uh, just to reacquaint you, the site is, uh, located off of northeast Jefferson Street and west of Tire Road. Property is approximately, well, the total lot area is approximately 39.92 acres in size with a net site area of approximately 37 and a half acres. Uh, two, almost 2.4 acres is, uh, right-of-way that is going to be dedicated through this plat. Uh, proper, or the proposed development includes a, all of, approximate 585,000, a little bit more, uh, thousand square foot industrial building, uh, to be located on one lot. Uh, the property is zoned, uh, after the city council rezoning, just light industrial. It no longer has the Adamsterry Parkway overlay associated with it. The light industrial zoning district allows for a range of land uses, including, uh, or a range of industrial land uses, including manufacturing, warehousing, wholesale, and distribution. Uh, the proposed site plan, um, for the property, let me see if I can get a good picture here. Proposed site plan for the property, um, the building itself is considered to be an, uh, general industrial building, and that, uh, general industrial building, building type stipulates the required setbacks, lot coverage, and building height for, for the overall building. The site plan provided as part of the site plan design review, uh, does meet all of those building setbacks, lot coverage, and the building height, uh, for a general industrial building. Uh, I would like to point out that the height for the parapet roof, uh, peak, or the parapet, parapet roof maximum height was modified as part of the general development plan to allow it to be a little bit higher, I believe it's four feet higher than what would normally be allowed. Uh, that was approved, uh, by the city council as part of the general development plan, and this, uh, final, uh, site plan that shows the building, uh, height and architecture does comply with that amended, uh, building height as part of the general development plan. Uh, the access to the site will be off of a newly constructed public road, which I believe is being called 27th Street. Access from that new, uh, public road into the property will be, uh, at the south end and at the north end. Uh, proposed parking for the building will be located along the southern end, uh, of the property here, adjacent to the building, as well as some parking adjacent to Tire Road, uh, the west portion of the site, and then along the northern side as well. And there's, uh, obviously a lot of truck bays, uh, in this area along the west and east sides of the property, uh, to allow for those, uh, industrial uses. Um, the building does, so all of the site, uh, that is not landscaped or covered in pavement for drive aisles or parking lots is landscaped. Uh, the site plan design review does include, uh, a landscape plan that is requesting alternative compliance, uh, due to the abundance of impervious surface on the site. Um, 67% of the site is in fact impervious, it's either covered by, uh, pavement or building, which leaves only 33% of the site, uh, that is able to be landscaped. Uh, the code requires, uh, a certain percentage of plant materials to be included based upon, um, the open space areas that are, uh, able to be landscaped. Those percentages and that type of, uh, landscape requirement on this site with this large of a building and parking lot, uh, simply can't be met in terms of plant units. Um, as you can see from the landscape plan here, any portion of the site that is green and is able to be landscaped is landscaped and has a number of trees adjacent to it or, uh, included in it. Special attention in the landscape plan has been provided, uh, based upon feedback from, uh, neighboring property owners along the northern property line, the northeast corner of the site specifically adjacent to these properties in, um, Grain Valley as well as, uh, unincorporated Jackson County, a, and along the Tire Road, uh, frontage. Um, a berm has been proposed, um, four to five foot berm has been proposed along the north, uh, in east section in this corner here to help mitigate, uh, the visual impacts of this property on neighboring properties. That was, uh, something that had come up with the previous, uh, public hearings on this project. And the applicant has worked, uh, with staff to help, um, accommodate, uh, additional landscaping and berm in those areas to help, uh, mitigate some of those concerns. Uh, in addition, um, well, let me back to the landscape, so, uh, the heavily landscaped areas, uh, in the northeast, um, portion of the site, along with the additional trees in the parking lot islands and to help screen the parking and along the southern and western boundaries, uh, staff is comfortable with the number of tree units being provided and therefore supports the request for alternative compliance, uh, from the landscape plan because, uh, our landscape code simply requires, uh, an amount of plant units that is difficult, very difficult to install on a site. Uh, there's just simply not enough area. The building design, as you can see from this proposed rendering, and I'll go back to the elevation, utilizes a mix of, uh, vertical and horizontal elements, uh, to help break up the massing of those long, um, the long wall planes. Uh, the building is primarily, uh, tilt-up concrete material, though there are some, uh, EFS detailings at the entrances. This, uh, elevation here shows what one of those entrances looks like in terms of the windows and awnings, and, uh, more, uh, attention to detail provided at that corner. This is indicative of what would look like at all four corners of the building, uh, where the entrances, uh, are into the building. These are the proposed building elevations themselves, um, again, a variety of patterns and colors, uh, to help break up the long, especially east and west elevations, um, along with the storefront, uh, designs at the corners. Um, the proposed architecture, uh, does meet the, um, design standards for this type of building from the, from the code. And, um, the other thing I'd like to point out is site lighting, uh, the applicants have provided a site lighting plan. Well, they did, but apparently the... Adobe does not want to show it, however, it has been reviewed by staff. Uh, they provided an additional landscape plan, or light, site lighting plan which they're required to ahead of building permit. They provided that, uh, for this meeting, uh, ahead of time. It does show zero foot handles along every, uh, property line, which is what the code requires, is that, uh, that you can't have any light bleed over from this property onto any neighboring properties. And so they have provided the required photometric plans that show that, and so, uh, there are, there is no, uh, light bleed over from adjacent properties. In addition, uh, the arc, the, the designers have worked to, um, put shields on the lights to help cast the light away from property lines, uh, and to shield the, the visible light fixtures themselves, or the light bulbs themselves, to further prevent any off-site glare, uh, of this use onto neighboring properties. So, uh, with this site plan design review, uh, that looks at the building materials, architecture, site lighting, and more fine details, uh, staff has reviewed the proposed application against the criteria in the code and finds that it meets all of those criteria for the site plan and design review and therefore recommends approval of that. As far as the preliminary plat, um, again, the preliminary plat is for, let's see if there, a, um... Is for a total of 39, roughly 39.92 acres in size, uh, and does include approximately 2.42 acres of right-of-way for a net developable site area of approximately 37 and a half acres. Uh, the proposed final plat does, um, take into account any necessary easements that are required to be dedicated as well, um, it, well, and does contain just the single lot. Staff reviewed, uh, the final plat against the code criteria for final plat applications and find that it meets those criteria in the UDC and that the proposed final plat is in substantial compliance with the approved preliminary plat that came before the planning commission on the 12th of October, and therefore also recommends approval of the final plat. At this point, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Mallon, and any questions from the commission for staff, Commissioner Billups?
Mr. Mallon, with the large amount of impervious surface that you talked about earlier, uh, can you give us an idea of how the stormwater is gonna be handled? Is that gonna be underground, or is there gonna be a really large basin somewhere, or what, what are we gonna do on that to make sure?
Um, I can attempt to address this, but we also have Adam with Public Works who can address it as well as the applicant can speak to that as well. But there are, uh, water quality ponds and, uh, which help to treat the water before it goes into a storm detention. Uh, those are located, uh, in this area here, to the west of the building, do you see the, in between the tree areas? Uh, in this area will be, uh, some water, uh, quality, uh, to help, and detention areas in this area. And, uh, as well, I believe there are some, uh, along the eastern edge, uh, and then I do believe the primary, uh, water detention will be down here in the corner, in the southwest corner of the site. So, the property is, uh, required to, uh, contain all of the, uh, runoff from, uh, the property onto its own property, so it can't, uh, go onto other properties, uh, at any rate that was not there before. So they are providing stormwater detention. Um, Adam, please feel free to correct me if I'm wrong.
No, that's accurate, um, they're releasing at a, at a rate that's, um, equal to or less than the pre-development rate. Um, there is a treatment train for the stormwater, it comes off the building, there's some treatment that's achieved through, um, some kind of roof, um, filters, I believe, and then there's also, um, overland flow that's captured by infiltration ditches, um, I believe those are the white stripes running vertically. So those, um, in the site, the majority of it drains to the west, but, um, so a lot of the roof area, maybe the entirety of the roof is captured, brought to the west, um, so it achieves different treatment throughout the process. Ultimately, is stored in a detention basin, um, but the, the infiltration trenches, they're on both sides and they, um, they, there's some storage there as well as treatment, uh, for water quality achieved through those. Um, I think there's, I can't remember if there's four discharge points. I think there's, can't remember if there's four discharge points, two east and two west generally, and those are following the existing contours and discharge points at the existing site currently discharges to.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff and the commission? Commissioner Cradoff.
As I recall, I believe one of the residents brought up the issue of with the lighting. We also discussed hours of operation. I was wondering, was there any conversation about that because of the residents that were there in the area?
Just about the site lighting and making sure that the light was downcast and that it didn't have any glare or bleed over onto the neighboring property lines, which they've provided the photometric study to show that is the case. As far as hours of operation, I do believe this will be a three-shift, twenty-four hour a day operation, and so I don't think the applicant's plans have changed based upon or since that time to now.
It seemed like the applicant didn't know who was going to be in his building, nobody had committed yet.
That's, that's true, but I think they wanted to not take away that ability to be twenty-four hours.
Do you think there would be a noise factor involved? I know the property in North Kansas City isn't surrounded by any residents, so it didn't seem like it would be an issue. I think they have property somewhere else, I'm not sure if it's in Grandview or off Seventy-one Highway. Looks like there's another dedication there similar to this. I was just wondering how it would affect the residents if it was noise factor involved at night.
I'd prefer to have the applicant answer that and maybe their experiences with some of their other sites or their experience with this building type in general, and so I think they could speak to that a little bit more.
Any other final questions for staff? All right. I would ask the applicant to come forward if they'd like and make a presentation or answer some of those questions. If you could state your name and business for the record, please.
Yeah, my name is Richard Wood. I'm an attorney with the Pulsonelli Law Firm in Kansas City, here representing the applicant. I also have with me Devin Schuster of, from Flint Development and Pal Menes from Davidson Architecture. First, we just want to say we appreciate the thorough presentation by staff. We are in agreement with the staff report, staff recommendation, and all the recommended conditions of approval that they have recommended be placed on the approvals. We ask that you approve both applications tonight. I'm going to start by addressing the question, I may have Mr. Schuster supplement what I say, but it's critical to a development like this that we be, have the ability to operate twenty-four hours. We worked with the neighbors to increase the berms and the landscaping in order to decrease the noise and then also screen the lighting and work with the lighting in order to decrease the light. But I think we did those things for the purpose of being able to operate twenty-four hours, knowing that this is a facility that needs to operate twenty-four hours. And as far as other developments, do you want to say a few words about? Just to be clear, you mentioned a couple other developments, like in North Kansas City. Help me understand how that, is that something that you think we operate or?
Yes.
Would that be the project at Liberty?
Yes, sixty-nine.
Yeah, so that one doesn't have budding neighbors, residential neighbors. But yeah, to Rich's point, you know, we tried to work as best we could to maximize the height of a berm, get as many plantings as we can, a lot of evergreens in that area, a lot of things that are going to shield not only light but sound to really try and do what we can. Because we don't have a tenant at this point, but we want to maintain flexibility so that we can be successful in attracting first-in-class tenant, and they may need to operate, you know, multiple shifts a day, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is there any other presentations or comments the applicant would like to make before we?
We're happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant from the commission? Okay. All right, thank you. All right, so hearing no questions, I would ask for a motion on the site plan. Chair. Commissioner Peel.
I move that site plan design review, S P D R zero-nine-two-zero-seven-four-eight-nine for Blue Springs Logistics with the two conditions, be approved as submitted by staff.
Okay, thank you. Have a motion by Commissioner Peel and a second by Commissioner Cradoff, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that's been approved with the two staff conditions, and I would ask for a motion on the final plat.
Chair.
Commissioner Peel.
I move that final plat, P F zero-nine-two-zero-seven-four-nine-zero for Blue Springs Logistics with its four conditions, be approved as submitted by staff.
Just to confirm that. Okay, that's four, okay, cool. Thank you. So, I have a motion by Commissioner Peel and a second by Commissioner Cradoff. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. And that's been approved with the four staff conditions. This item will be recommended and heard by the city council on their Monday, November second meeting at six P M. All right, thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is for a master alternative sign plan, A S P one-zero-two-zero-seven-five-one-seven for Valley Oak Meats, and I would ask at this time for the staff's presentation.
Thank you, Chair S. Anderson, Planning Commission. Before you today, the master sign plan applications being requested, approval of that is being requested by Brian Round with Ward Development, who, someone is here in his stead today. But it's located where the former Winter Meat used to be, Valley Oaks took over, same use as Winter Meat, and they want to, they have been working diligently to make that building ready for their opening and, and part of that is this sign package that they're bringing before you tonight. It's located at one-ten Northwest Twelfth Street, Twelfth Street to the west of the property, a little bit north of Oak Street and Main Street, just about a block north of that. The property is about sixteen, sixteen-six-hundred square feet. It's zoned actually light industrial, let me go over it, zoned light industrial in the gray here, L I, which the uses food production is allowed in that zoning district. The proposed signage, there are a few, three signs in question tonight. There are two existing signs that are just being refaced, and so those two signs are not part of this sign package. The pole sign, and that was refaced with a sign that's a little bit smaller than the existing sign was from Winter Meat, as well as the existing exit sign from Winter Meat was replaced with one for Valley Oaks. And so, since those are existing signs, they can be refaced by a new company, but if any of the, if those signs ever do lose their legal non-conforming status, pole signs aren't allowed, as well as that the wooden pole sign is also not allowed since they don't meet the allowed sign types today. But if they ever do lose their non-conforming status, those will need to come down. But the three signs before you today are the butcher sign, the meat sign, as well as the American flag. And there are, in general, there's three issues, three reasons why these are coming before you. The first is that the American flag, which we're calling a mural, since it is not overtly commercial, the American flag mural, murals do have to come before the planning commission for approval, as well as the Public Art Commission, which the, on October thirteenth, the applicant went before the Public Art Commission and did receive their recommendation to the planning commission for approval. The mural in general just needs planning commission approval. The other two signs, there are a couple issues with the other two signs. One, painted signs are not allowed unless they are a mural, and so the applicant is requesting to allow commercial signage to be painted directly on a building. Secondly, the butcher sign is larger than allowed by code on that building facade. Commercial signage can only take up to ten percent of a building facade, and the proposed butcher sign is a hundred and nineteen square feet, whereas ten percent of the facade is actually limited to seventy-six square feet, or in essence, it's taken up fifteen, roughly fifteen percent of the facade, whereas ten percent is all that is allowed. So, I'll go over some of these issues one by one. First, the mural, the murals can take up to a hundred percent of a facade, and this is obviously less than that. So, in terms of the size, it's acceptable. The design, there's not much to say about an American flag, so staff believes that it's both aesthetically pleasing and appropriate for the location in terms of size, location, and everything. There's no any, no issues, since it is a building painted sign, there's no issues with any site triangles or anything like that. Staff does have one concern, the applicant, the artist actually at the Public Art Commission mentioned that they do want to have a tattered old flag look that the American flag eventually would look more like is ingrained as part of the building historically with a little bit more degradation of the paint eventually. Staff didn't know where to pull the trigger in terms of when it should be maintained, when it should be removed, at what point is it too degraded. So, staff suggests a fifty percent rule on the flag itself since the artist's intention was to have it partially degraded to begin with. So, since it is painted, that could happen quickly, could, but it is being painted with a weather-ready exterior grade paint, and the applicant will just need to make sure that they take care of that sign as needed to make sure that it doesn't degrade too Staff does believe that the mural meets all the criteria for approval from the planning commission. The mural would not have to be removed since it is not overtly commercial, would not have to be be removed until the property owner desires it to be, as long as it is maintained. The other two signs, however, which I'll get into now, the other two signs are more commercial in nature, so they will need to be removed if the building is never, or no longer used for butchered selling meat as part of their business. Those two signs, they are also painted, staff does have the same concerns about painted signs and how quickly they could degrade. So, for the two commercial signs, staff believes that once they are degraded by ten percent, whether it's peeling, flaking paint, or anything like that, that the applicant or the property owner should maintain those signs to make sure that commercial signage is taken care of to a level and a degree that matches the building itself. The, staff believes that while painted signs are technically not allowed for commercial signage to be painted directly on a building, they can be painted on a, they could be painted on a, a board, which is then attached to the building, but in this instance, the applicant is requesting to paint directly on the building. And there's a couple reasons why, though commercial signage is not allowed to be painted directly on, one, to make sure that the building integrity is taken care of, to make sure that if it is ever removed, since commercial signage does, can potentially change more often, that when it is removed, that is done safely and not to hurt the integrity of the brick or the building itself. With concrete masonry units behind the sign, staff believes that they will hold up relatively well when, if the sign is removed, but staff does encourage that, or does encourage that if the signs are removed, that they must be removed in a way that does not destroy the underlying wall. The size of the butcher sign, I'll address next. The size is too large, it's at fifteen percent approximately of the wall, whereas ten percent is the maximum. But staff does believe that since this is in the downtown area, a more urban-sized sign and painted signs also feel a little bit more urban, and so that style of sign, that size of sign is appropriate in the location that the applicant is requesting, since it is in the downtown area. Additionally, staff believes that the intent of the code is to encourage aesthetically pleasing signs, and staff does believe that all three signs actually are aesthetically pleasing and fit nicely within, on the building. So, all in all, staff does recommend approval, Public Art Commission recommended approval as well on the thirteenth of October, and staff recommends approval with the three conditions specifically concerning the sign maintenance, making sure that it's maintained, fifty percent level for the flag to get the tattered old flag look, and then at ten percent degradation for the two commercial signs, as well as concerning the sign removal, where the American flag can remain since it is not overtly commercial and the commercial signage must be removed, as any other commercial sign must be when the business leaves the premise. So, with that, I will answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Jury. Any questions for staff and the commission? Commissioner Cradoff.
I want to make sure I understand, the applicant who's taking over the business is going to be the same type of operation that was in there before?
Correct.
So, this is, this is a slaughterhouse basically? And what's different from the way it used to be? Have you talked to the businesses in the area to find out how they feel about the signs? Have you got any opposition to that? And is this sign compatible with what your master plan, plan for downtown is supposed to look like?
As far as the neighboring business, we haven't received any, any comments from them, neighbors or adjacent property owners. As this is in a public hearing, we'd never sent out public notice to anyone, so I don't know if they knew or know of this particular application. So, additionally, the signs are currently up, so, and we haven't received any complaints.
So, for, for the future of the downtown area, your master plan, what you want the area to look like, is this compatible with what the rest of the business may look like?
The downtown plan, I believe, covers the zoning districts of the downtown zoning districts, and this is actually just barely outside of that zoning districts. It's in the L I zoning district, whereas all the downtown zoning districts start with a T, T zones. So, I guess this
The reason why I ask is I know it faces the rear of a lot of businesses there, the restaurants that have outdoor patios and things and so forth. I just wonder how that look would present itself along with what they're trying to do for the future, what you might have coming.
The majority of the signs face twelfth, which I guess is away from the businesses to the south. Only one facing the businesses to the south is the meats sign, and I, I don't know if, I don't know if they have any issues with the signage itself.
Any other questions for staff? Commissioner Bills.
I might be able to help you, Mr. Cradoff. Since I am a board member for Downtown Alive, there was some discussion at our last board meeting, and there was pleasure in the fact that this was going to reopen as a meat market again, so, and the signs were already up, and there was no negative comments about that at all.
Well, I think the disdain that I've heard before was the way the outside of it looked when you could see the animals outside and so forth, but I think they've enclosed the area and it looks quite different.
Yeah, and, and again, that's not part of the signage, but, yeah, they have redone all of the pens and everything else on the, on the backside of the building.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? All right. Would the applicant like to come forward? If you could state your name and business, please. Maybe to state your name and, and business, please?
Good evening. I'm Jake Huddleston. I oversee operations for Valley Oaks and I also work for the wards and the development side. I would love to answer any questions you have. Nathan did a fantastic job of, of the presentation for the signs.
Any questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, I would ask for a motion on the master sign plan.
Chair.
Commissioner Peel.
I move that master alternative sign plan, A S P one-zero-two-zero-seven-five-one-seven for Valley Oaks Meats with the three conditions, be approved as submitted by staff.
Thank you. I have a motion for Commissioner Peel. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Billups. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So that's been approved with the three staff conditions. Thank you. All right, that brings us to other business. Mr. Mallon.
We really don't have any other business to bring forward this evening. There will be a meeting on November ninth. We do have a few applications to bring forward to you that evening, so we will back, be back here on the ninth. And hope everybody drives safe on the way home. And if anybody has any questions, again, I know I say this at any meeting, but please do not hesitate to reach out and ask us any questions and we will get you whatever information you are looking for. So, thank you all for coming tonight and braving the weather and we'll look forward to seeing you in two weeks.
Any other business from the Commissioners? Hearing none, I would entertain, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion, Commissioner Peel, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Billups. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, this means adjourned. Thank you.
Good evening, Karen.